Good evening, everyone. Hi, good evening. We have a packed house tonight, so we appreciate everyone being here. I'd like to call the regular meeting for the City Council of Temple City to order on May 2nd, 2023, time is 7:40. Madam City Clerk, may we have the roll call, please?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Sternquist?
Present.
Councilmember Viscara?
Here.
Councilmember Yu?
Here.
Mayor Protem Chavez?
Here.
Mayor Mann?
Here. Before we go into the invocation, I'd like to ask Mr. City Attorney to report out on the closed session meeting we had earlier.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, the City Council opened the meeting at 6:10 this evening, moved into closed session at 6:11. The council was briefed on two items of potential litigation under Item A. No reportable action was taken. Item B was taken off calendar for the evening, and the council did adjourn at 7:25. Thank you very much, sir. That is my report.
All right, thank you. And tonight, for the invocation, we have Mayor Protem Tom Chavez to provide it. If we could all rise for the invocation and remain standing for the pledge afterwards.
Thank you, Mayor Mann. Please join me in prayer. Lord, thank you for our mayor, the city council, and all those who work to make our city a great place to live. Give us the power to do what is right and to rule in fairness. God, please bless those who are in law enforcement, our firefighters, and healthcare providers. And especially, God, thank you for blessing us with such outstanding young men and women and their teachers and advisors this evening. This we pray in the name of all that we hold sacred and holy, all that we hold good and right and true. Amen.
Amen.
Tonight, to lead the Pledge of Allegiance, we have Boy Scout Troop 161. And the scouts leading the pledge and presenting the colors are Stephen Shay, Andy Yam, and Daniel Shu.
Hold on, attention. Hold on, front center. Hold on, form march. Oh. Hold on, post the colors. All as a uniformed and a veteran, please salute all others. Please put your icon of your heart. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin.
Our Pledge of Allegiance to the might of the United States of America and the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hold on, form. Hold on, tree. Oh. Hold on, Smith. I see.
Thank you, Scout Troop 161. Next, we have a number of ceremonial items and presentations. This is the fun part of our meeting. First, we have the Older American Proclamation for Older American of the Year. Established in 1963, the Older Americans Month is celebrated every May. Led by the Administration for Community Living, Older Americans Month is a time for us to acknowledge the contributions and achievements of our older Americans here in Temple City, highlight important trends, and strengthen our commitment to honoring all of our older citizens. This year's theme, Aging Unbound, offers an opportunity to explore a wide range of aging experiences and to promote the importance of enjoying independence and fulfillment by paving our own paths as we age. May is also the time we recognize the Temple City Older American of the Year, and it is my honor to officially announce the 2023 Older American of the Year, James or Jim Robuck. As he's making his way to the podium, I do want to read one other intro for Mr. Robuck. He has been an active volunteer in Temple City with Kiwanis, Cub Scout PAC 156, and the Builders Club and Key Club at Temple City High School. For over 36 years, he has been the go-to person to fix anything and everything for the organizations he works with. He is truly an outstanding senior, and the community is grateful for his contributions and adding to the fabric of Temple City. And so, if Mr. Robuck, if you would like to, I'd like to invite you to say a few words.
Yeah, I was gonna say, he's got a pretty good voice also. You're making me blush. I don't know what to say. This was out of the blue. Mr. Viscara says, "It's your fault." I understand.
I'm proud of it.
Thank you. Thank you for this honor. I enjoy the doing. I don't like the paperwork. I mean, counsel, I would understand all that part, but I actually, like, physically pans on with stuff. So anytime somebody asks, you know, she asks too much. But thank you for this.
And so, at this time, I'd like to invite counsel to join me in presenting the certificate of recognition to Mr. Jim Robuck. And I know Jerry's gonna want a photo for us. I'm gonna stay up here for different reasons. Since we do have a proclamation for Older Americans Month, Aging Unbound, and I'd like to invite our Parks and Recreation Director, Adam Matsumoto, to receive this on behalf of everyone. And so, just briefly, May 2023, whereas the city of Temple City includes a growing number of older Americans who contribute their time, wisdom, and experience to our community, and whereas community benefits when people of all ages, abilities, and backgrounds have the opportunity to participate and live independently, whereas the city of Temple City can support our community members by not limiting thinking about aging, emphasizing the many positive aspects of it, and inspiring all of our older adults to push past traditional boundaries. Now, therefore, I, William Mann, Mayor of Temple City, and on behalf of the City Council of Temple City, do hereby proclaim May 2023 to be Older Americans Month, and I urge every resident to recognize older adults and the people who support them as essential members of our community. So, Mr. Matsumoto?
Can we bring up Ms. Ronald Ruiz?
Absolutely, please.
She's our senior coordinator.
Please, please.
Do you wanna...
You need some gray hair to go up there?
Get in your steps today.
All right. Next, we have the Temple City High and Oak Avenue Science Olympiad Team. So we are so proud and privileged to have this special occasion tonight, to invite them to showcase their winning designs, and also to receive recognition from the City Council for all their accomplishments this year. The Temple City High School Olympiad, Science Olympiad Team, has worked incredibly hard for the past seven months to prepare for 23 events at five science olympiad tournaments. I don't know how you do it. Some build events, some of these events require hundreds of hours of testing and iterations to discover optimum designs. That speaks to my inner engineer, so, just so you know. After finishing third in LA County in February's regional tournament, they outperformed local competitors as the top LA County team and the fourth-best team in Southern California last weekend at the California State Tournament. Both Oak Avenue and the Temple City High School teams placed first in Southern California in the flight event. So, yes, please. So at this time, I would like to first invite the co-captains and co-captains Joshua Su and Phoenix He up to the dais. Yeah, if you could... I know there's a lot of you. Take your time. And so, at this time, I know Joshua and Phoenix will speak a little bit and give us some background on their science olympiad team, and to also, I understand you have some demonstrations for us. So Joshua, Phoenix, take it away.
Hi. Thank you so much for inviting us tonight. Again, I'm Joshua. This is Phoenix. And this is our Temple City High School Science Olympiad Team. So these are some of the smartest individuals that I know, and they worked so hard across the entire season to do very well at states. So, yeah, do I have a clicker or should I just...? Okay.
Wait, no clicker? Oh, okay. So to introduce the program, a rundown of Science Olympiad. So Science Olympiad is a national, a nationwide tournament. Each team usually... You can hear me now? Okay, so...
Yeah, if you're closer, it's good.
You can see it there, too. Oh, cool. Okay, so, Science Olympiad is a national tournament. We compete against schools nationwide, especially in a very special tournament that we went to that I will elaborate on later. But usually, a team has 15 official members and 17, I mean, 17 in total and then two alternates. And we have events that range from all areas of science and engineering, including biology, chemistry, earth and space science, and then physics and engineering.
So, we're gonna skip flight right now because they're outside preparing that event. We'll have a little demo for you guys, just to, you know, have something for you guys to look at. But we'll move on to remote sensing.
Okay, so I did not elaborate on this, but usually, there are two archetype, main archetypes of events, the builds and the testing. So I will go over the testing now while Josh is preparing for the builds. Okay, so, this is one of my events where I won silver at states this year with Jackie. It's one of my favorites because you can really see in those two diagrams where satellites from as far as 35,875 kilometers above Earth's, like, sea level can deduce data on basically everything about the Earth from sea surface heights, sea temperatures, and like, trace gases in the atmosphere. And what it does is that it compiles data from like, three decades into one single snapshot, and we can really see how Earth is changing in one photo. And I think it is one of the most rewarding events that I've done in terms of learning how climate change works and what we can do to mitigate it. Okay, I will go on to the competitions while Josh needs a little more time to show off his amazing flight build. So, this year, Temple City High School has, like, reached a milestone. It's hosting our first-ever invite competition here at Temple City High School. It is called the Bird Science Olympiad Invite. With, it is also like, the largest in-person invite in history across the country, and it is held here, which is really cool. So we were able to play six out of 77 teams from Washington and Northern California and Southern California on January 28th.
So is the dog part of the team? And what's his or her name?
The dog's name is Charlie, and it is not part of the team, but it can be our mascot.
Not mascot, there you go.
Okay. So Golden Gate Science Olympiad, it is personally my favorite event, competition of the year, and I'm sure a lot of the team members can agree. We traveled all the way out to UC Berkeley to compete, and we've competed against very good teams, like state champions from NorCal, SoCal, Texas, and Washington. And we unexpectedly placed fifth, so we were all really happy in that photo. Okay, so, regionals, we placed third. States, we placed fourth, which is the highest we've ever placed, and I am very proud of our seven team members for all working hard this season. Let's go back to flight.
Okay, thank you, Phoenix. You guys can go up. Okay, so, I just wanna introduce the young man on that side. His name is Matthew. He's my partner for the high school flight event, and we were the ones that placed first at states. So, yeah, he's been a really great partner, very hard worker. And here we have Jasmine. She's the team member in Oak, and they also got first place in flight at states as well. So, yeah. By the way, you guys can launch the planes while I'm talking. So, okay, so, this event is very, very... Oh. Yeah, so, we need to spend a lot of hours kind of tuning the plane. As you can see right now, this is the result of about maybe 30 seconds of trimming. Oftentimes, we'll put hundreds and hundreds of hours into just trimming one plane to fly around in circles in a gym, and normally, it can get to, it can stay in the air for around three minutes to four minutes. So, this event takes a lot of time, a lot of patience, especially for Matthew and I. We're planning to go into engineering fields in the future. So, for me, I'm planning to go into aerospace, and this event has taught me a lot about aerodynamics. It's taught me about the engineering design process and just overall problem solving that I can use and apply in my future career. So, yeah, this is a very fun event. Sometimes it's a little frustrating when the plane doesn't behave as you want it to, but when it hits that three-minute, 30 seconds in the air, you know, it's just worth it. So, yeah, thank you. Thank you, guys.
What are the materials that are used in building that?
Yeah, so, the main body of the plane, and also you can see for the propeller blades, this is very light balsa wood. So it's not that dense. It's very light. For the propeller blades, we soak it in water to form it into the helical shape that will give it the most optimal geometry to really push the air. And for the planes, this is a material called Mylar. You could kind of compare it to like Saran Wrap, but a lot thinner and a lot lighter. So this is very delicate. As you can see, we've pared the plane a couple times, so we had to patch it up. I'd say around, it takes around eight hours to make each plane if we were to do it from start to the end. Everything here is custom-made. Many of our competitors use kits that they buy, but we like to do things in-house because, you know, it gives us the advantage. So, yeah.
How did you come up with the overall design? You didn't pull off the shell from, download from computer somewhere? You guys designed it first?
Yeah, so, this event is actually, it's been a long time in the making. So, before Matthew and I, there was a really great team member. Her name was Kylie, and she was really the one that started this event. We took her knowledge, applied it this year, and improved upon it. But the design overall, we kind of used the kits as a basis for the overall design, and then we expand upon that and find different ways to optimize, like, for example, the wing structure ratio of the chord from the main wing to the back wing.
So you say you won first. Was that based on the length of time the plane was in the air? So you were there the longest?
Yeah.
And is that powered by rubber band?
Yeah, it's a looped rubber band. We also had to play around with like, the different sizes and thicknesses to give us the best time. Because, you know, if you use a really thick band, plane's gonna skyrocket, and then it'll crash into the ceiling, which is not good. But if you use a really weak band, it won't be able to take off. So we had to find that happy medium and optimize the plane.
Great job.
Thank you. Okay. Well, yeah, I just want to point out for states, we got fourth this year, and it was a new record because normally we place, or we've been placing sixth place for the last two years, and the years before that were a bit lower. But this year, we were fortunate enough to have such a team of bright, young individuals that were able to surpass our previous records, and we hit a new one. So hopefully the trend continues.
How many years has Temple City participated in the Olympiad?
I'm not too sure, but I know we've been doing this for about a decade.
Where was this picture taken?
This was taken at Caltech. This was where the state tournament was hosted.
That looks familiar.
Yeah. Okay, so, I want to invite two of the team members, Haley and Ellen, to come up, talk about. Yeah. Have fun.
Okay, well, yeah. Hi, my name is Haley. I'm a junior on the team.
Hi, my name is Ellen. I'm also a junior on the team. We're twins. So, this year, we decided to, thank you. This year, we decided to help out with Emperor's Science Olympiad team after, we used to have some people that I think were hired to help, and basically, something happened and they couldn't come anymore. And so, all the elementary school teams ended up stopping because they couldn't run, and they didn't have people to run. And that was when Ellen and I were in like, sixth or seventh grade. So, basically, as soon as the pandemic ended, we were like, oh, we have to start the team again. Because for us, it brought us here, and so we wanted that experience for other people. And so, we reached out to the advisor. Actually, Ellen and I are in that picture. We're like 10, left and right most. But we reached out to the advisor, and we said, "Hi, would you want to start the team again?" And the deal we made was that we would do everything that was legal for us to do as minors. We would like, teach the kids and like, basically give them their events and like, train them to do competition. And Ellen, do you want to talk about the competition?
Yeah, so this year, we had the pleasure and honor of hosting the Division A or the elementary school regional tournament at Temple City High School. And I think it was a very great experience for everyone on the team and also for me and Haley as coaches. And we are also proud to announce that Emperor, our team, did place first place overall out of 46 teams in the LA County, which we're very proud of.
Thank you. So, expanding upon that tournament, we did host the Los Angeles County Regional Division A Tournament at TCHS. And this tournament was pretty much all student-run by these individuals here. So, these guys planned, wrote, and facilitated all the tests, all the build events, and they were the ones that pretty much ran the tournament. So, for a lot of them, this was their first time kind of writing a test. Normally, they're at the other end, and they have to take the tests, but now they get to inflict pain and suffering on the kids. But I'm sure it was a fun experience for them, just to inspire all the kids to kind of continue on with Science Olympiad even through high school. Okay, I just want to talk a bit about our practice schedule because for us to achieve these kinds of results, it takes a lot of work and commitment. So we have three practices each week, two during the weekdays that are after school. And in these practices, we do anything from study for tests, we collaborate with partners on like, making notes for binders. Do we have a binder? Yeah, so... So that's a test binder for environmental chemistry, which is a lot of stuff. That probably took a long time to assemble. So, that's why we need all these meetings. We have Saturday meetings as well where we go a little more in-depth. And as far as the builds go, do you guys want to hold up your builds? So Issa there, she's holding an event called Bridge, where the goal is to hold as much weight as possible. That's also balsa wood. Ted over there is holding an event called Scrambler, where you have to convert potential energy into kinetic mechanical energy, and you have to hit a target with the vehicle. Yeah, so, for the builds, we meet almost every night at the gym just to get our testing done. And yeah, even besides that, a lot of the teams spend a lot of hours outside of study meetings on their own at home. So, I just want to commend them for all their hard work, and you guys really deserve all the praise, so. Lastly, I just want to say a quick thank you to everyone here, especially especially for the City Council, for you guys to invite us here. It's a pleasure to kind of talk about our event and why we love it so much. Also, thank you to Mr. Bell, Ms. Lee, Mr. Slattery. You guys were all there for us, thank you so much. Yeah, especially for Mr. Bell, he was really the one that mentored all the builders. Uh, he kind of transformed his house into a little workshop for us to kind of work on all our projects. So, thank, thank you to him. Big thank you. And yeah, um, that's pretty much all. I, I guess I should say thank you to the parents, too, because you guys gave us the rise. Yeah, that's all. Thank you.
All right, Joshua, if, if you can stay up there, we do have certificates for all of you. And so, I'd like to invite, I'd like to ask my council, City Council to help me pass out these certificates.
First of all, Joshua.
Thank you.
I'm assuming everyone knows their name, but. Next, I have Ted Hong. Matthew Kong. Ethan Lee. Jackie Lee. Phoebe Lee. Phoebe's not here, okay. Tatiana Liang. Oh, she's not here? Kaylana Peng. Tiffany Fan. Steven Shi. Lauren Tan. Ellen Tang. Haley Tang. Issa Wu. Uh, Bright Shu. And Jonathan Zhao.
TempleCityPhotos.com, you guys.
All right. Let me see everybody there, can see everybody's face? If you don't mind, can you take out your minutes for fifteen seconds? Thank you.
Don't breathe.
Yeah, don't breathe. Here we go, everybody's looking over here. There we go. What about the, uh, coaches and?
You guys want to get a plan?
Is anybody going to first place? Go better self? Sorry. All right, here we go.
I would like to have, I hope they're intelligent. Right? We all have different gifts, right?
Well, again, thank, thank you so much for sharing your wonderful achievements with us. We are so incredibly proud of all of you. And I, I do want to share one personal note. This, seeing all of you takes me, uh, back to my high school days, which I won't tell you how many years ago that was. But, but when I was in high school, I actually competed in the LA County Science Fair and the California State Science Fair, which is a little different than the Science Olympiad. At that time, they broke us up into different categories, so I had friends and classmates that competed in different types of biological sciences, et cetera. I was the only outlier. I was the only person competing in the Earth Sciences category. So, I usually don't bring this up, but I, I personally placed second at the LA County Fair and second at the State Science Fair.
And Mayor Man is an engineer today.
And I became an engineer, so. So, if, if that's any encouragement for all of you, continue doing the fantastic work you're doing. Engineering is an incredibly rewarding field. My, my project was on climate change and climate science, so when Phoenix was talking about it, it brought me back. I won't go into gory detail, but basically, my project was on mapping sea surface temperatures, looking at fossilized plankton, and comparing, and comparing oxygen isotopes.
Now, you realize that means nothing to an attorney, right? Just tell him it's empty.
So, so this is a, there's a, a personal spot that hits when I see all of you doing such incredible work. So, I, I am so proud of all of you, so thank you again for encouraging. All right, and also, we have the, uh, Oak Avenue Intermediate School Science Olympiad Team. This is also a treat as well. I, I would like to invite the coaches for Oak Avenue Olympia Team, Ms. Marlese Reyna and Ms. Winnie Joe to the podium. And, uh, I, I'd like to invite you to, uh, maybe introduce the program and perhaps showcase any winning designs that.
Yes, hi, everybody. So, um, thank you for having us. Um, the high school did a wonderful job of pretty much explaining how it all works. It's the exact same at the, um, intermediate school level, twenty-three events. However, the events aren't as difficult as the higher level of high school. Um, they're still exceedingly difficult, but it's just as you progress on, it gets more, um, difficult. But I just wanted to point out as well, um, our team has worked really hard this year, and we do not meet as much as the high school does. So, they meet one day a week in my classroom on Mondays, and then everything else is up to them. So, for the most part, like, I don't think we should be called coaches. We should just be called advisors, because we provide them the space and some assistance if they need it. But for the most part, the team is completely self-guided. They figure it out themselves, they get together with their teams. And then certain things like learning how to use a specific tool or a saw, you know, they get, uh, parental help or help from Mr. Bell, um, who's like literally opened up his home and has been such a huge help in that arena. Um, and thank you to the parents, too, because they do assist them a lot with learning how to navigate tools for building or how to, um, organize their notes. And also, the high school, um, a lot of them are juniors and seniors now, some are sophomores, but they have been helping out with our team coming as mentors for the past, since they went into high school, so three, four years, um, which has been very helpful. And they do the same with the elementary schools. But I did want to point out, this is the best that our team has ever done. I've been coaching this team for eight years along with, uh, Ms. Joe here. And Kevin Slattery, he's been coaching, what is it, like your twenty-eighth year at the high school? Twenty-five. Yeah, so twenty-five years at the high school. So, did he already leave? Man, I wanted to give him a big shout-out for that, okay. But yeah, so like twenty-five years. So, we started it, you know, eight years ago, and it's been our baby. And it's been amazing, because we get to see them excel at this level, and then go into the high school and just hear all the amazing things they're doing, and just hear how eloquently they speak about it with so much excitement and joy. And so, this team, I mean, we're a close knit, we call ourselves a family, and we love them and their parents, and it's just become, um, so much more than just a science team, but a, a nice little tight-knit, loving community, so. But I am so proud of them. We did place, uh, fourth out of forty-four teams at the regional competition. We placed first in flight and in wheeled vehicle and in roller coasters. Those are all amazing build events. Um, and then at the state competition at Caltech, this is the most, um, we've ever awarded, been awarded medals. I tell them every year, like, don't expect anything, it's really tough. Like, even if we get one medal, we're gonna be the loudest team screaming in there, it's such a big deal, you know? And, um, this year, we got four, no, five medals at State. So, first in flight, second in ride it do it, fourth for bridge, fifth for roller coaster, and fifth for ride it cat it. Um, and we placed twelfth out of thirty-one teams at State. So, that just goes to show, um, how much dedication these, these amazing students have, and we are so proud of them. So, if you guys want to come up?
Uh, I just wanted to say that we are so happy to be like, kind of like feeding up to the high school. How many of you guys were in our, in Oak Sci Alley? Sounds like that's when our babies grow up, too.
So, yeah, if you guys want to show off some of the, uh, stuff that you brought, so they can get an idea. So, we do have, um, what they're holding up in the back, that's their wheeled vehicle. So, the high school, there's events that are similar, but there's different parameters, different dimensions, different mass they have to meet, things like that. But the wheeled vehicle did have to reach, reach a specific, uh.
Could he, could they bring it up to the front for everyone to see?
Yeah. So, they do tell them, once they arrive, like, how many meters it has to travel. Um, and they have to do their best to reach that, that, that target. Oh, you can show, so you can, yeah, so they can look at it and see. So, they, they made that themselves. And then we have, um.
Wow, very nice.
Also, our bridges that they built. So, there's a device where sand, um, is poured into a bucket. And, uh, basically, they measure the mass of their bridge, and, yeah, the team that wins has to do with their bridge being, uh, the lightest mass, but also can carry the most mass. So, they won for that with the, the bucket of sand completely being filled up.
So, they're, they're future civil engineers, right?
Yeah. And then if you guys can hold up all your notes and kind of just show them off, so they could see, like, how it, like, open it, show them your, I mean, they have like the smallest print total. If any of you want to try reading that, I tried, it's like, what, I need a magnifying glass? But it's pretty impressive, all the work that they put into that. Yeah. So, some events, you're allowed to have certain-sized binders, um, some you're allowed to only have one page of notes front and back, as small as you'd like it to be. And then our, uh, flights, uh, if you guys want to bring your plane up, so they can see yours as well. So, um, same thing, high school, but different parameters that they have to meet. But it's the same thing where the longest traveling plane, um, would be the winner. And yours guys got, what was it? Do you remember? Three, what was your time? Three minutes and forty-five seconds.
Wow. So, do you ever have competition between the high school and the junior high, or?
Because they do, they do spend a lot of time practicing in the gym, right? Did you guys ever do that? No. Oh, see, they're, they're so nice.
Are, are the planes made out of the similar material? The balsa wood and the Mylar? Okay.
I think they just help each other out as well, and they bounce ideas off each other. And I think another really cool thing is that we actually work, or I, you know, the high school, they work with Arcadia High as well, and they'll use each other's gyms and bounce ideas off of each other. It's like a friendly competition to just keep pegging each other on.
I know, I've heard that. I'm like, you guys are helping the competition?
And then, and then I have to brag a little bit for our, um, flight at State. What happened was, the reason why the planes aren't flying very well in here is there's a draft. When the actual competition happens, they close all the doors, nobody's allowed in or out, and you just let the plane fly and just see how well it goes. And during State, somebody actually left in the middle of their flight, which kind of put, like, the door stayed open for a while, and it pushed their plane, and it like hit, was it three things, three, four things? And then eventually got stuck in a wire, and we were like, oh, we're gonna ask, you know, we're gonna appeal to see if we can, you know, fight that, because it hit things and it got stuck. And then they didn't let us appeal. They were like, no, it's, like, by the time they got back to us, it was already time for the award ceremony. And I was like, but you didn't even let us try, because we got first place, even though.
That's a good story. Great story. No appeal necessary.
So, thank you very much for honoring our team, and thank you, um, to our team and families and all of you for being here.
Thank you, and thank you so much. And we also have certificates for all of the students, so if I can again ask City Council to help pass these out. All right, we have Ronan Ali. Jaden Al. Maggie Cow. Rylin Chow. Nina He. Avery Kadohiro. Samantha Kim. Ethan Lee. Jasmine Lee. Eliana Lee. Rosetta Lee. Kayla Fan. Smira Sir, uh, Riram? I'm sorry, how do you pronounce your? Serum. Okay. Congratulations. Anson Wen. Bonnie Wu. And we also have Josie Yu, but I think she's not. Okay, all right, well, Josie Wu. Well, Josie Wu.
(inaudible).
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 See, we should adjourn on a high note, but we have other city business to take care of. But you're more than welcome to stay or leave, we won't be offended. We know you have school, and I heard there were AP exams, so good luck to all the students who are taking those. (inaudible). You have an announcement? Okay. (inaudible). I have to make an announcement. The Camellia Festival theme contest is going on right now. You guys are all brilliant. CamelliaFestival.org, submit your $150 prize, you guys. Hey, hey. (inaudible). Go on, go on, find it. Wait for my caca body, please. All right. I was actually gonna, Dawn, I was actually gonna call you up right now to... I hope it does. Okay. Well, we'll go to public comment, and Ms. Dawn Tarrant, why don't you come up to the podium? There's still some up captive, there's a traffic jam going on.
They're going to leave. So, thank you very much for allowing my outburst. As you may hear along the way, the city of Temple City is going to be selling its, settling, celebrating its 100th anniversary of being established as a city. Let's see, Mr. Gino, that's May 26th is the correct date. So, we are really excited, and to start off, the year of celebration, the Historical Society of Temple City is going to be having a dinner on May 28th, that's Sunday, May 28th, at the Historical Society. Please come and join us as we celebrate, and as a special perk, we're going to have the best pie in Temple City contest. All the information is available on the website, historicalsocietyoftc.com, and that feeds into me wearing my other hat, which is the Camellia Festival Director. And we are in the process of having our theme contest for the 80th Camellia Festival. Lots of, lots of year celebrations here. And the deadline for entry is this Friday, May 5th. It's really easy to do, you just go to the website, camelliafestival.org, it's an online submission, $150 prize to the winner, plus you get a ride on the parade and go on free carnival rides for the opening. So, I hope lots of the children in our community will submit their theme, and I hope lots of everybody will come to the Historical Society kickoff barbecue. Thank you.
You know, I think if you go out to the parking lot, you can probably do it again.
Thanks.
All right. Thank you, Dawn. Next, we have Ms. Valerie Munoz from the Water Quality Authority.
Good evening, Mayor, excuse me, and Honorable Counsel. Valerie Munoz, Mayor Pro Tem for the City of La Puente, but Chair Representative on the San Gabriel Basin Water Quality Authority. Just wanted to come and say hello. I also left you a packet, and I just realized I put April, I think, 18th on the packet. I guess I want to turn back time. Time's going by too quick this year, so I apologize for that. But I wanted to extend, and I'm hoping that possibly I can get an invitation or be able to put this on one of your upcoming agendas on the city council. It's an eight, 10-minute presentation, and this is an overview of what we can provide, which just goes over the contamination, you know, when the agency was established, who sits on the current board, as well as the current amount of monies that we have secured for federal and state fundings. I would like the opportunity to hopefully, the mayor would be able to allow me to put this on, bring my director here, and answer any questions that you may have on the Water Quality Authority. As you know, we've secured millions of dollars over the year since the agency has been instilled through the state legislator, and our whole goal is for water cleanup here in the basin. So, it's really also important, because there's times where we'll ask city elected officials to support, for support letters, for federal support letters, that will help us secure federal funding, which cleans up our area water for our residents. So, I'm asking if possible, I can maybe touch bases with one of the city clerks later this week to see if this is something that I can possibly do and put it out for the community, as well as some information regarding the Water Quality Authority. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Munoz, and I will ask that our city clerk, Ms. Peggy Cole, will reach out to you to find a date that works for you and your executive director, and will agendize this as part of the presentations for a future meeting.
I appreciate that, and my direct cell phone number is on the paper there, and any of the council members or mayor, if you have any questions, please feel free to reach out to me as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Valerie. Good to see you.
Thank you. And we do appreciate you taking the time to come and give us updates, so thank you.
Oh, thank you, and it was such a great meeting, like, listening to all this, I was so excited. And as a council member, when I go to meetings, I was like, hey, I really like this older American proclamation, I'm going to bring that to my city. So, I get some great ideas. I was in Monrovia a few weeks ago, and I was like, adopt a dog. They have highlight a dog every month for the Humane Society during the council meeting. I'm like, check mark, that's what I'm going to do. So, I really appreciate the opportunity to be here. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sure your city has some great ideas, too.
So, my auto mechanics in La Puente, and when I take my car there, I go to this little hamburger place on the corner. What's the name of that place? You remember?
We have...
It's the local.
Is it Chris's Burgers?
It was over by the old theater, you know, the old part of La Puente?
The old, oh, you're talking about either Value Super Burgers?
Maybe that's the...
Yes, there's, we have quite a few old...
Good place.
Yes, it's amazing. You have to try the donut hole. We have the big donut hole, it's a landmark in California, so best donuts around.
And say hi to Mark, you see Mark Paulson a lot?
I do, he's, yes.
Real quick, a little trivia, Mark Paulson's son played Little League for me back in the late 80s.
Really?
And his father, who's now deceased, was one of my coaches.
I will let him know, I will actually see him in a few weeks. Yes. Have a good night, thank you.
Thank you.
Good night, thank you. All right, next, we have Ms. Jing Li from the library.
Good evening, Mayor Man and City Council. This is Jing Li from Temple City Library. I'm here to give you updates about our liberal programs. On Friday, May 12 from 4 to 5, we're going to celebrate Asian Pacific American Heritage Month and Mother's Day with art and inspiration. So, teens aged from 13 to 17 are invited to come to the library to make origami flowers, which will be perfect for gift giving. And we, of course, were also going to discuss the importance. Important, though, women play in Asian and Pacific Islander culture. The following day, Saturday, May 13, from 3 to 4, Gypsy folk dancing group will come to perform at the library, perform a dance from Polynesia and other Asian countries around the world. This program is suitable for children aged 5 to 12 with their parents and caregivers. During summer, we're also accepting volunteers, so any high school students or eighth grader from Oak, if you guys are interested, please come to the library to fill out this application. And once again, this year, Temple City Library will be launching the library site again. So, last year, we did the go up and go, we serve every day 150 meals, but this year will be different, it's going to set in, so we're going to see a lot of children. I think that program's starting in June until in the middle of August, before the school starts. If you need more information, please visit our website, which is la countylibrary.org, or give us a call at 626-285-2136. Thank you.
Thank you, Jing.
Thank you, Jing.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the council at this time? All right, seeing none, I'll close public comments, and we have the consent calendar. Are there any items that council would like to pull, or do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any objections? If there's none, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Sternquist?
Yes.
Councilmember Viscara?
Yes.
Councilmember Yu?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Chavez?
Yes.
Mayor Man?
Yes. Consent calendar has been approved. Next, we have a public hearing, 8 to A, establishment of an expedited nondiscretionary multifamily review process and a library of prototype architectural designs for multifamily projects. So, Mr. Cook?
Very briefly, Mayor Man and members of the council, we'd like to actually have this as a study session and go through that. One element we'd like to add to that study session, too, would be objective design standards potentially related to ADUs, but we feel this is important enough, in the last council meeting that we had, a lot of questions were brought up, so we'd like to schedule a study session in June to bring this forward. So, this would be continued to a date uncertain, but with scheduling and working with your schedules for a study session by the end of, no later than the end of June.
Then what?
Any... You have a question?
No, I didn't hear, no later than the end of...
The end of June, yes.
I have a simple question. Would the study session be just city council, or would there be, like, say, the planning commission? Has this gone through the planning commission already?
This has gone through the planning commission, this has gone through the planning commission already. So, this would just be, this would just be with the council from an implementation standpoint and your final policy direction.
And so, if substantial changes were made to what the commission saw, then as the law requires, it would be sent back to commission to review the changes that were made at the study session, make a new recommendation, and then it would come back to council. So, there are more steps in the process, but as the city manager said, based on the last discussion of the ordinance itself, we felt as though more, a more informal and wide-ranging discussion rather than a focus on the ordinance text itself would better serve the council and your priorities in this case.
I have a follow-up question. So, wouldn't it make more sense to have the planning commission at this workshop to maybe, I don't know, shortcut any of this back and forth, or is that protocol?
It would have to go back to the commission anyway. Legally, once an ordinance receives a recommendation, if substantive changes that the commission didn't consider are made, then it has to go back to them to review and consider those potential changes. They might say to you, no, we don't like those changes, our recommendation is to stick with what you had before. That's their right as a commission.
But we don't have to follow that.
No, no. But if there are new things that had not been brought for their initial consideration, they have to review those new things. That's the California planning law.
So, tonight, we just ask if you continue to do a date uncertain and authorize us to schedule a study session.
And Mr. Murphy, this being a public hearing, we have to, we should be opening it for a comment, or do we not?
You can certainly open for comment. If anyone has a comment on what has been presented before, they can certainly give it tonight. And then, as the city manager said, it's a date uncertain, which means if no substantive changes are made, then it will remain at the council level, but there will be a new notice given of the new public hearing date. So, there will be more notice, more opportunity for public comment, but yes, if anyone here wants to speak tonight, yes, sir, that would be appropriate.
Are there any other questions from council? Okay, then I will go ahead and open the public hearings. Any comments on this matter? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing, and if we may have a motion for, based on what Mr. Cook said?
Mayor, I would make a motion that we continue the public hearing to a date uncertain and schedule a study session with city council before the end of June 2023.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any objections? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Sternquist?
Yes.
Councilmember Viscara?
Yes.
Councilmember Yu?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Chavez?
Yes.
Mayor Man?
Yes. Next, we have unfinished business, none, new business, none, and we go to an update from our city manager.
One brief update, thank you, Mayor Man and members of the council. At the last meeting, there was some discussion related to some of the infrastructure along Las Tunas. Staff has already started to take some inventory. We do not have a comprehensive inventory of the infrastructure along Las Tunas, including, which we discovered, which I just learned, there is actually irrigation underneath many of the pavers and near the planters, so there's a comprehensive inventory of infrastructure that we're looking at, so that when we come to you with some ideas and some thoughts. But in the meantime, what we'll do is we are going to up some of the pressure washing and blowing of the street, but there was a few things we discovered in the last week in terms of the actual infrastructure on Las Tunas. So, once we will finish that, and then as part of the budget process as well, come to you with some ideas. One of the ideas we have is maybe take a few blocks at a time, but we will come to you with some ideas about some of those infrastructure changes.
I guess the irrigation's not working?
According to staff, to me today, the irrigation throughout the system is broken.
Are you saying that there is a, there is a water pipe that goes into every one of those planters?
Every one of those planters and through, and through the sidewalks.
Well, I would assume that also included some kind of potentially electrical wire as well.
There are, that's a little bit, but there are electrical on parts of Las Tunas as well, but the irrigation was news to me. So, we got some, we got some infrastructure challenges there that are much more comprehensive than initially thought. So, we'll get that inventory, and what we will do is we'll up some cleaning maintenance in the meantime over the next few, the next few months, and when we come to you with the budget, we'll have some better ideas.
So, you're going to come back to us with suggestions on how we kind of clean up the mess that's on Las Tunas right now?
Yeah, because it's simply not as easy as just removing pots anymore or anything like that. There may be some broader infrastructure improvements that would need to be made than just simply removal. And then also, too, one of the issues we found with some of the pavers is how they're sinking and how any future street furniture would fit on there as well.
Right. I remember back in ancient history that, I don't know if it was a state or county ordinance against pressure washing sidewalks because of the stuff that would wind up going down the sewers.
We have to be cognizant of the NPDS, NPDS issues that related to pressure washing, but depending on the type of pressure washing we do, it's not as, it's something we have to be cognizant of, but it's not prohibited.
Brian, can I ask, when you take a look at the, under the planters and the electrical and do that inventory? I know we've spoken about this for some time, in enhancing our lighting that's down there for Christmas, and it's not too early to start thinking about that now.
That would be, that would be the broader, comprehensive look, we would look at the infrastructure as well. Yes, ma'am.
So that we could do something very nice on the downtown.
Yep.
Okay.
So, Brian, are you saying this is going to be folded into the budget study session or kind of in parallel?
I'm going to try to do, and we're going to try to do it in parallel.
In parallel, okay.
Is this something that would benefit, say, at Halk Committee that would help?
I would, I would suggest as well, I just want to probably give the initial data to the council, but I would suggest that going to the current standing committee as well.
Which standing committee is that?
I don't know, I don't know if the standing committee is still, I think we sunset that.
We sunset that, we, I would suggest probably starting a new ad hoc or?
I believe previously was Mayor Protem and myself, so, but I, I don't need to be on it again, so somebody else.
I would like to be on it because I want to remove those planters.
Yeah.
Or at least clean them, I mean, you know, I mean, I don't know how much it'd cost to, you talked about, I don't know if we, can we even, we may not be able to pressure wash those, I don't know, because all the gunk that's on there probably isn't good for the environment either.
We're going to do a little sample of that in the next week, see what we can do.
Yeah, because I think that's all it needs, you know, a little, little cleaning and plants, we're good.
But into this, into discovery, looking at things, we, it's a little bit more comprehensive, and the infrastructure is a little bit more involved than.
No, I understand, we can't just pick them up and move them, there's things that have to be done.
I'm volunteering to join councilmember Chavez.
All right. Do you want to set up that?
So, I guess my?
Or do you want to wait?
Do you mind if we wait?
No, I don't mind at all.
Okay. Because I was going to suggest maybe with the new discovery and inventory and the lead-up that you and staff are doing, that'll give council a better idea of how we want to tackle that issue moving forward.
Yeah.
But I do concur that perhaps bringing that back, that standing committee back is the, is the way to go. We can address that at a, at a later meeting.
Thank you for your patience.
When do you anticipate bringing that information back?
I'll, I'll know more from Jesse and the team related to just some cleaning issues by the end of this week, so I'll be able to come back in the next couple of weeks.
And I think you mentioned earlier that you were going to perhaps bring us some facts and figures about maybe, in this short block radius, about some new trash cans and benches.
And that would be part of the discussion with the council and then the standing committee or ad hoc as well.
Because, you know, I noticed today when I was coming home down to Las Tunas, which I come almost every day, the area, like, let's say we go three blocks east and west of Temple City Boulevard, is really the shabbiest looking part of it, and then when you get down to, like, City Hall, it looks nice. I mean, the sidewalks are clean and things just look nice, so it's, you're right, it's that kind of concentrated area for some reason, and that's, I think, perhaps the first step should be.
I think that gets a lot more foot traffic.
Well, that, and then of course the trees, those trees have gotten so big and they've dropped so much stuff on the ground, and I'm sure it's frustrating to staff to have to go out there and clean it so many times, it just, it just requires it unfortunately.
So, what I would suggest to Mr. Cook is by the next council meeting, bring council enough information so that we know how to move forward as whether we need to establish that ad hoc at that time, which I think we will need to, but at least give us enough information so that we as a council know the direction that the ad hoc or standing committee meeting will be taking on next. Because otherwise, Las Tunas has always kind of been this open-ended thing, it's like a rabbit hole that you go down, and you don't know how far we're going to go down. So, at least give us some parameters that we can work with, because, I mean, budget, like you said, it's happening in parallel. The last thing we want is for an open-ended item to make the budget study session even more confusing.
Certainly, absolutely.
All right.
Thank you, Mayor.
Any other updates besides that?
No, thank you, Mayor Mann.
All right, next update from our city attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Two housing-related updates from Sacramento. First, the Attorney General's Office has either filed or is threatening a lawsuit against the city of Elk Grove in the Sacramento area regarding their denial of a housing project that included affordable units, and the Attorney General's Office didn't feel that the denial was proper. So, as you may know, in the current fiscal year's budget, there was $25 million appropriated for the Attorney General's Office to work on housing-related issues. This is one. So, it just is a lesson for cities, it's not just developers or housing advocates that are looking at your actions, the Attorney General's Office is, is looking. The second item was the Department of Housing and Community Development, which your staff and your consultant were able to get the Temple City housing element approved. They just returned the City of Orange's housing element due to comments from the public directly to HCD, and in particular, a developer who didn't like that a site they thought they could build on was not included in the inventory, and some sites that they felt were not buildable were included in the housing inventory. That, along with some advocacy, resulted in that housing element being returned. One of the items that the City of Orange was asked to do was more public outreach. Obviously, they're quite delayed in being approved. The builder's remedy that we've talked about is in play for them, and they now have to wait to do their public outreach because HCD required it to be done over a period of time, and so those developers that are not friendly to the city now know that they have time to begin a builder's remedy project. So, it, it just goes to show the state is very serious in their opinion or their approach to housing-related issues, and so we as a city, and in particular, your community development staff and my office have to really be on the ball in maybe guessing at or having a good feel for what they're doing and what they might do with what we're going to present. Things that may come up in the future here will be our report on our SB nine ordinance and potential changes to that, as well as continuing to look at what HCD is doing with accessory dwelling units and making sure that our ordinance is compliant not just with the letter of the law, but perhaps with HCD's interpretation of the law, so that we don't get the Attorney General sicked on us the way that Elk Grove did. So, that's something for us to be doing, but you may be getting reports from us on housing-related issues, and tonight's just some examples of the kind of enforcement or other actions that we might see. Thank you very much.
Isn't there a couple of other cities kind of thumbing their nose at them right now, too?
The city of Huntington Beach is in a, quite a lawsuit.
La Jolla as well, isn't it? Where is, where is, what's the finest hotel that's down there?
Coronado.
Coronado, is it?
I'd be happy to.
Maybe it's the city of Coronado.
Happy to speak about that later, sir.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, thank you. We read these things in the news, you know, and then we think about you, and then we wait for you to come back to us.
I'll put it this way, sir, I, my firm does not represent the city of Huntington Beach.
Good.
Thanks for, thanks for sharing.
A lot of billboarders there, though, probably.
All right, well, thank you, Mr. Murphy, for that report. All right, next, we have a council reports on ad hoc or standing committee meetings. I know Mayor Protem and I did meet as part of the school district city standing committee. Would you like to say a couple of things?
Do you want to, or you want me to? All right. I'll start, then you can finish, I'm sure. Several things on the agenda. One was the further discussion on the school resource officer that we've talked about before, that the school district would like to have. Really not too much more information, maybe Brian can add some, some of that, it's kind of still in negotiation, there's a number of things that we need to still look at. Frankly, there's no timeline as far as getting that school resource officer, but it's still in the works, and hopefully, and then, of course, with the new sheriff and now we have a new captain, you know, those are all factors that are coming into play. So, still on the, still on the table, but, you know, nothing, nothing in, for certain right now. The school district also talked about, I guess they've been having some property thefts at their maintenance yard, which is right next to ours, which I wasn't aware of, but, and so we, they had asked us for, if we had been experiencing any, anything like that, and also, I know Brian is going to reach out to them and see what we could help them with or suggestions as to how they could mitigate those, those problems they're having. There was some discussion on the joint use agreement. I know that Mayor Mann has, has asked that that be a priority, and I know that discussions are, are ongoing. Some of you may remember there is a, a use agreement regarding Milhaim Field that is set to expire in September of next year. We're hoping that we can get that ironed out together with the overall joint use agreement and rather than have separate agreements here and there. So, I think the goal is to have, have an agreement by the end of the year, at least that's, that's the, the target date. Some more information on that. Let's see, we provided some information on the 100th anniversary of Temple City. Interesting, I didn't, my notes, I couldn't remember, Mayor, maybe you could address this, there, the school is going to have, I believe, May 26, I think, on, they're going to have a, addressed as a 100-year-old day, which wasn't really, it wasn't dressed like you would dress 100 years old, 100 years ago, but dressed as a 100-year-old person would dress, I think, or something like that, but interesting concept.
Yeah, at the, they're doing it at all the elementary schools, so.
Yeah, yeah. And we had asked at the last meeting to, for them, if they had any ideas, as you know, the enrollment has, has been down at the schools, and what we could do maybe as a city to, to help to increase that enrollment, and a couple of things that were brought up is maybe perhaps use of our electronic billboard, and that, there'll be some more discussion on that. There wasn't, I can't remember, maybe, Mayor, you can, I mean, I have a note, they had asked to perhaps if they could place flags to promote their graduating students. It was a unique idea, can't remember if other schools, maybe some other city have done it, but rather than, you guys have seen some of the flags where they have the names of the graduates individually on these flags, well, their concept was to put a flag for each, I guess, school and who's going there.
Oh.
Okay, so it kind of highlighted where the students are going for college, and we thought, you know, that was a, a good idea, so I think we'll be working with them on that to accomplish that, hopefully by the end of the school year, and figure out where we could put those.
Is that for college-bound kids?
Yeah, yeah, where they're going to go to college, like where they've been accepted, you know, just to kind of.
It's kind of elitist.
Well, yes and no, I think they're very proud of where their students are going, you know, and so they want to kind of give a shout out to their students, I think. I've seen that in other cities where they do that.
You know, that reminds me of, I know the youth committee during their last meeting, at least for the graduating seniors, right, they, they bring in the.
Yeah, they always put their banners of where they're going to college.
Yeah, I thought that reminded me.
And, you know, it's, I mean, as you see tonight, I mean, we've got some pretty bright students in our, our district, and, you know, I'm sure, you know, they're, they do get accepted to a lot of great schools, and I'm sure they want to, you know, they're proud of that, so.
If you, if you follow the news, there's a lot now going on about the fact that all of the trades are, are underemployed. There's not enough plumbers and construction people, all that, because we've had such an emphasis on, on sending our kids to university.
Yeah, well, and there's still a certain element to that, you know, you know, of course, our, our sons went to private school and even more so, you know, you, God forbid that you go to a two-years, you know, junior college or trade school, that's like, can't do that, which to me, I get, I guess I'm a little biased teaching at PCC. I think they get a pretty good education there, and it's a good, good, you know, springboard for, for going on to a good four-year college, and people tend to forget about that, but I, I.
Yeah, and what's, what's impressive, I know for PCC has it, is they have specific transfer programs.
Oh, yeah, very good transfer program.
So, it's, it's a solid path to connect you to, whether it's a Cal State, UC, or any other school.
But many of the students don't realize is.
I went to PCC.
There you go. What they don't realize is it's, it's easier to get into your college of your choice coming out of a junior college sometimes than it is coming out of high school.
Yeah.
But, you know, that's just the mentality, I think, and you're right, there is a certain elitism to that sometimes, but. And then, which kind of coincides with tonight, we, we encourage them to invite their youth groups to council meetings, to come and to, and, and we talked about that at the meeting, and certainly they took us up on it, and what a great meeting it was tonight to have all these students coming, so I think we'll see more of that. It's funny how they didn't really think about that, and we've done that in the past, but then we go through, I think, stages, and of course, the pandemic, I think, kind of put a little botch on that, but hopefully we'll get back in it and, and see those groups come and share their accomplishments. I mean, I mean, how many championship Little League teams can we have, right? I mean, not that baseball is bad, but, you know, it's always nice to see a whole, a whole balance of things, and, and tonight was a, a great example, so that's all I have. Do you have any, I don't know if you have anything else to add to that?
No, I think you've, you've covered pretty much most of, you know, almost all the items. I, I do want to segue off of one other thing, you were talking about the, well, we were reporting out on the 100th year anniversary and a lot of the coordination and all the different groups that are working together on it, and I think one of the takeaways that we, we came away with that was, at a, at a council level, I think it would be, since we expect the planning and celebrations to extend across the span of an entire year, it would be beneficial to establish an ad hoc meeting at the council level. We were suggesting ourselves to be part of that, but the, the main driver for that is we want to keep counts, the entire council at least up to speed as to what exactly is going on in terms of the next steps, the planning, and I know Mr. Cook and Director Matsumoto and staff have been working a lot on laying down the details for the near and long-term plans, you know, starting from, you know, we know the Historical Society is doing a lot of things, but as part of the reporting out that we did to the school district, we talked about, you know, joining or combining consolidating existing events, like using concerts in the park as a way to, as a springboard for advertising some of the upcoming centennial celebratory things, and, and so I think, having said that, I, I do want to establish today a, a ad hoc committee for the centennial celebration consisting of Mayor Protem Chavez and myself, unless there's any objections from council.
Do we, maybe, Adam, do we have a committee for the concerts in the park?
Like, planning for this year?
Not, typically it's done in-house, the concert planning. We are working in conjunction with the Historical Society for adding on, layering on centennial celebration, centennial information as part of this year's concert series. So, they were meeting as a board last week, and we're in those, those beginning stages of, of, of doing that. But with the formation of an ad hoc, we would be able to loop in city council at that point, and then also work towards not only, as Mayor Mann had mentioned, the near-term celebrations, but also how we want to do that throughout the year. For the Historical Society, and I think for the city as well, it's more of a year-long celebration, so the actual township signing is May 26 of this year, but we're looking at that centennial extending all the way through May of 2024.
When is the first concert?
The first concert is that second Thursday, second Wednesday of June, I think it's June 13.
Yeah, I think you posted, you posted the schedule already, I think that's been out. You know, just to follow up on, on that, this was news to me, but, and you mentioned it, the, the idea for this 100th year's anniversary, although the, the anniversary is May 26, they plan on, as, as Adam mentioned, go all the way into next year as far as events and things, so it's going to be around for a while, and so we, you know, we'll hear more about this, but, but they want to go from May 26 of 2023 to May 26 of 2024, so we'll see how that goes, but yeah.
But what was also exciting was that we, at least for now, there's a tentative date for the end of September that isn't, we're trying to combine the Fall Festival, the Classic Car Show, and an actual kind of carnival and parade element with the, as part of the centennial celebration. So, that would be maybe one of the highlights, the bigger things that we're doing in tandem with a lot of other things that are being layered into concerts and other things like that, so.
You ever have too many parades, right?
So, Ms., I guess, Ms. Quo and Mr. Murphy, do you need anything else for establishing that ad hoc?
No, sir, you have, you have created, let's see, it would be item eight, Centennial Ad hoc with the mayor and Mayor Protem, and it was created 5223. I think we'll add that to the next agenda for a report. Thank you, sir.
And, and I would also ask if Mr. Cook and Director Matsumoto can assist us in the interim. I would like at least some kind of update at each council meeting, you can help, help us out. I don't know when we'll be able to get a meeting together as officially as an ad hoc, but to keep, I know there's a lot of ongoing stuff, so if you could provide a brief update at every council meeting to all of council as well. Thank you. All right, are there any other ad hoc or standing committee reports?
Nope.
No? Okay. All right, then we'll move on to items separate from the regular agenda. Councilmember Yu?
Mayor, nothing to add, thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Viscara?
Just a question, and maybe Scott can answer it. The Kmart site, what's the latest there?
On that site, they're currently doing the tenant improvement, so that means the interior work, so that the new grocery stores can come in, and then there's also going to be a new gym, Choose Fitness, and the.
Is that underway?
Yes, yeah, all the interior work is underway, and then the exterior work is almost, I won't say almost complete, but you can go by it and you can see the finished materials are being, are already on the building.
And how about the landscaping?
Landscaping is being installed, and then there's also a proposal for 40 electrical vehicle charging stations. I'm not sure about that work. I'm not sure about that work, but that's the plan.
Sorry for going sideways here.
No. Did you mind, Greg, maybe we're out of order to ask a real quick follow-up question. Aren't we putting charging stations in there, too?
That's what you just said.
Oh, I didn't hear you, I'm sorry.
Yes, as part of their approval for the exterior improvements, they were required to install 40 electrical vehicle charging stations.
That's a lot.
It is a lot.
Nice.
Councilmember Stirkus?
A couple of things. I wanted to remind our, I'm sorry, remind our city manager that we still have not gotten back the emergency handbook update was going to be given to us in about February. So, we're late on that. And, you know, I always worry when Mayor Protem is the mayor coming up, and we haven't had emergency preparation, you know, windstorm, pandemic. So, I really want to be prepared.
Well, just so you know, depending on what's going on at the time, I might have to just, you know, not serve, for the good of the community.
But anyway, with you in the wings, I think we need to be well-prepared. So, if we can get that done sooner than later. And I think we were also promised maybe a tabletop exercise with some of our clergy, and we haven't heard back on that.
A what?
Remember, we did the tabletop emergency, what was it called? Like, a workshop.
Okay.
You know what I mean, call when we did that with Brian, and we did it over here in the-
Oh, in the room?
Certain room, yes.
EOC?
Yes. It was really good, very informative. Because honestly, I don't know what my role is anymore. I've forgotten. So, it would be-
Good brush-up.
Good brush-up for us. I had spoken to Brian about this. The City of Clermont went out for RFPs for professional design standards for ADUs. So, they were looking specifically for each RFP to include three design standards that they felt fit in with the architecture in Clermont. And what they felt this would do would be to not only work, show the state that they are working to help build accessory dwelling units for affordable housing, but also to streamline the process, such as Scott, you had brought us when we looked at design standards to sort of look through, I guess someone could come up to the counter, and the process would be much easier if they chose something that was pre-approved. So, I thought since maybe there wasn't an appetite to go right into doing it for single-family homes, that we might take a look at something like Clermont did for just the ADU. So, Brian, you're going to work with Scott, I think, and bring-
I think that's going to be part of our discussion.
That'll be part of our, that'll be part of the workshop discussion.
Okay. So, I just think it's something that we might find interesting. I think it would encourage-
There was a good article in LA Times, I believe it was this last weekend, of the, how that's taken off in the design and architects that are getting involved in those kind of things. And it does kind of lessen the costs or has an effect on the cost of building an ADU to some extent, so. I think it's a good idea.
I think it alleviates a lot of staff time of having to go through, you know, the regular process. If you already have these preset designs, you can come in. And, you know, I'm assuming council would approve them, so, and our, so anyway, we'll talk about that more as that comes up. Just a reminder that mosquito season is here now. So, with all the rain, continue to empty your saucers, anything that you might have standing water in. You know, I, in my own yard, never even thought, but I have an old wagon that was filled with some tiles that when we retilled the kitchen, and I've always saved them in case one cracked. And I went out there the other day because it was stuck in a corner, and that thing was full of water. And I thought, here, I'm always such an advocate of everybody removing their water, and I have this source of mosquito breeding in my own backyard. But please remember to do that. If you have a green pool, the aerial scout-
The drone?
The drone is going to be out and about in all the San Gabriel Valley cities in the next two months. So, take care of those green pools, spas, ponds, and just make sure that you're doing due diligence to help free us of mosquitoes and West Nile virus. And I think that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protem?
You know, I had intended to kind of a brief report on the last, it's been two weeks now. We, the Executive Committee for JPIA had our annual workshop, and a number of things that were discussed at that meeting that have some effect on member cities. But I forgot my notes, so I'll have to bring it next time. But there are some good things. And one of the good news is that constantly, of course, working on lowering our premiums for our members, including Temple City. But, you know, the challenge right now in the, of course, in the insurance industry is just getting insurance written in California because of all our natural disasters. It's becoming more and more challenging. But I'll get some more information to you guys on that. One of the exciting, well, I don't know if any of you heard, some of you, I'm sure, know John Scholl, who is the director, president of California JPI. He has announced his retirement. He will be retiring at the end of June. And there'll be going, there'll be some invitations being sent out to everyone regarding that kind of send-off for him. So, that's probably going to be, I think those are also in June, but I'll have some more information on that. And that's it. I'll get some more information next meeting on that. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. I don't really have much. I think I've spoken enough this meeting. There was one item, Brian. So, it's kind of connects to what we were asking you to bring back related to Lastunis. This is kind of ancillary. If you recall, during our last meeting, I think there were some concerns about the trash receptacles on Lastunis. And so, if you can, I don't think it needs to be part of that presentation, but if you can at least provide an update to council about how exactly that works with respect to the commercial trash hauling side for the businesses, what are the code enforcement-related issues we deal with? Kind of give us a general sense of what the challenges are? Because inevitably, any discussion on Lastunis that is touching upon specific things, it's more than just the planners, it's the trash receptacles, it's the benches, it's, list goes on and on. Thank you. And, yeah, we've, a lot of exciting things going on. I don't have anything else to add for tonight. Next, we have additional public comments on items not listed on the agenda. Anyone still, Mr. Jerry Janbazian?
Good evening, Mayor and council members, Mayor Protem. And my name is Jerry Janbazian. I'd like to remind everyone of National Day of Prayer on Thursday. And I remember-
Wait, this Thursday?
This Thursday. It's always the first Thursday in May.
We haven't heard anything.
I know, and this is why I'm coming to you tonight, because I remember in years past, we had such a vibrant committee that took care of this, and the spearheads were actually Carl Bloom and Jeanette Bloom. And I don't know anymore if we have an ecumenical council in Temple City anymore, but I would like to encourage the council to spearhead some sort of a committee that could make this happen again next year in 2024 and continue it, and how appropriate it would be to have prayer since Tom is going to be mayor. No offense, but, you know, I think it'd be a good time. But to reinstitute that, it seems to me that we have many churches here in Temple City, and they need to come together and form some sort of an alliance and have somebody spearhead it and make it happen again. I think that we can all agree, even more now than ever, that this country needs prayer. And I think our citizens are willing to come together to have that happen. So, if the council could do anything to spearhead that, that would be wonderful. The next thing is, I would respectfully ask that the council adjourn in the memory of Dominic Mortelero. He passed away on April 28. He was a shoe, had Dominic Shoe Store here in Temple City for many years. The building is next to Wells Fargo.
Jerry, is that sign still up there?
Yes. Yes, it's still there. I saw it today. And he owned many shoe stores back in the day. And it was at Santa Anita Mall, Cerritos Mall, Lop 20 Mall, Dominic Shoe Store, it was prominent. And so, he is a former, you know, businessman and property owner. I served with him many years in the 70s and 80s on the Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors. So, if you could just adjourn in his memory, I would appreciate it. The service is Monday at 10 o'clock at Holy Angels, and-
How old was he, Jerry?
He was in his 90s, early 90s. Didn't look at, he was pretty vibrant. Whenever I saw him, he'd come in, and we'd talk. And he, pre-deceased, his wife has passed away and also his daughter. So, he's the last one. So, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
All right. Thank you, Jerry. Anyone else? Public comment? All right. Here, I will then close public comment. And I would like to adjourn tonight's meeting in memory of Dominic Mortelero.